You can all join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And a moment of silence? Thank you. Just want to take a minute before we start the meeting and just remind everybody to turn off their devices or get them on vibrate. That can be disruptive sometimes. All right, approval of the March 8th school board needing minutes.
Make a motion to approve them.
Keith, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Suzanne. Do we have any changes, additions, omissions, adjustments? Dan?
I've got a couple.
Okay.
During the elections, for the elections, we ran it by our policies. And it was not a motion per se, it was just an election. And basically, let's say, everybody who wants to vote got a chance to vote. There wasn't yays, nays, or abstentions. And so where it says like vote nine oh oh, all in favor, I don't think that is accurate. I don't know what the votes were, but I know all we needed was one person to say yes and the elections happened.
Okay.
So however we want to word that, and that would be vote for...
Chair and vice chair.
Vote for the chair and vote for the vice chair.
Mm-hmm.
It wasn't a motion per se, only the nominations were a motion. And there wasn't even a vote on those.
I guess there was a vote.
Yeah.
We did vote.
On what?
It wasn't a roll call vote.
On the position?
On the position. People accepted the nomination.
I mean, I was 1,500 miles away and I voted.
On the nomination.
On the acceptance of the nomination.
On the election of the chair.
No, no, no. I made a specific comment that we were going to do it by the policy and every, I heard a lot of yes, which meant the policy said, "All those who want to vote for the chair or for Diane," and that was it. There was no nays, there were no abstentions, because I know, because I didn't vote for anything.
So how would you word that? We ask all those in favor of...
I would just, who would vote in favor of that and then it would end. It would just be end. It's not a mo, look at the policies.
According to the minutes, that's not how the meeting went though, so...
That's correct. That's why I'm trying to correct the minutes, because the minutes, I don't believe, are accurate.
Like, I abstained, like, I didn't vote for myself.
That's right.
So I abstained.
Then it doesn't count. You could have it recorded in there that you weren't voting.
Well, she wrote down that I abstained from...
Right, but it wasn't technically a motion with a vote in favor. If we read our policies, it, I brought it up last year, and this year, it's an election. When you go to the ballot booth, you don't say, "I don't want to vote for someone." You vote for someone you want. It's a positive response, and that's all it is.
Well, I could put elected by nine zero, eight zero one.
There's no eight zero one, it's elected by whatever.
Well, hands were raised.
Yeah.
And a count was taken.
Absolutely.
No, there was not.
There was.
Because I did not raise my hand, so the count is inaccurate.
It may be inaccurate, but a count was taken.
You can, guys, do whatever you want, I'm done with this one.
Thank you.
It's inaccurate.
You're nitpicking.
No, I'm trying to follow the policy.
Yeah.
There's a difference.
So I would say that the chair called a roll call vote, vote nine zero zero, all in favor, is inaccurate, that should not be in there.
That is definitely inaccurate. And it was a show of hands, it was simply just all in favor, and it was a show, it was a show of hands, of people indicating support or preference.
It would be preference, I would not necessarily support, but prefer.
Do we have anything else on the minutes? Ben?
This could be nitpicking, but I'm going to do it anyway. Non-public session minutes. The roll call vote, the roll call should record all the yays, nays, and abstention by name. You have recorded the, myself and Rheta abstained, which is fine, but you did not list who voted in favor. And I think a roll call vote, according to the Oxford Dictionary of Politics, requires a formal record, and I'm quoting, of the presence and the vote or abstention of each member of a legislator, and we are a legislative body of sorts, traditionally by calling out each name. So I would like to see that in the future, all roll call votes record the yays by name, the nays by name, and the abstentions by name. I think that would follow good procedure. And also on roll call votes, when we go in, or going into executive session or non-public session, I think in addition to the motion should be that the body will or will not return to open session. I think that is part of the proper process as well.
I'm sorry, I think I missed that last piece of what you said.
In other words, when you, when you go into non-public session, you take a motion, part of that motion should be that the board will not return, or the board will return to open session, to let people know that, once the meeting is adjourned, we're not reopening the meeting.
Typically, the board always goes back into public, if nothing else, during your meeting.
Then according to, according to procedure, then that should be in there, that you would notify the public that you are coming back into open session, to advise and to warn the public that you are coming back. That is proper procedure.
Okay, so your issue with our going into non-public was that we did not notify the public that we're coming back?
That, part of it, but also the roll call vote should record all who voted in favor by name, all those who abstained by name, and all those who voted negative by name.
Okay, remember, we talked about this two weeks ago, because you had asked about that.
Right.
And...
And I waited for the minutes to come out, and the minutes did not record that. That's what I'm, my point.
Right, but my answer to you at the time had been, because Denise writes down who abstained, and we have the attendance on the top of all present, so it is, has been left by deduction, that if these individuals did not abstain, and they did not vote against, that the remaining parties in attendance voted accordingly.
That is making an assumption, but procedure requires, this is done in the U.S. Congress, this is done in the New Hampshire Legislature, that roll call votes record those, even though it lists who's there, it does record the names, and I think that we should follow that process.
Suzanne?
I don't think we use parliamentary procedures here, I think we use Robert rules.
We do go by Robert's rules, yes.
No, if we don't use parliamentary procedure, I don't see the necessity of doing all that extra work.
I just want it on the record.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other changes to the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes? Rheta, Philip, Suzanne, Keith, Diane, Jenny? You abstained, okay. Opposed? Dan? Ben? Abstaining?
Yes.
Is Jenny? Okay. Thank you. Correspondence.
We have two letters from, one from King State College thanking Ken Martin from the middle school for helping to organize the New Hampshire Music Educator Association Large Group Festival at Boe High School, and one from King State College thanking Josh DeRosa, who worked with him as well in the high school chorus and select vocal ensemble, and I believe a couple substitute reports.
Okay. We have a little extra this evening, in between correspondence of good news. Mr. Clutier?
Oh, I'd like to ask Lori Clutier, if she could come up here, please. As you all know, Lori was a member of this board for nine years. And if you look at the people, they can see how young you look now. She was 22 years old, probably one of the youngest...
Now, we know how old she is now.
Yeah, that's okay, I don't think, do math, do math.
That age is you.
I'm a little older than she is, and I was very fortunate in being a justice of the peace, I was able to actually swear her in, and I was very proud as her father to swear her in, and we would like the board to present you with this little apple, and I don't know if you want to open it, because I've never actually seen it.
Yeah.
It'd be nice to thank you for the service you provided to this body.
Thank you.
Crapped well, though. Very nice. Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're free to say anything you want.
It was a blast, but I am so happy to have my Monday back.
All right.
She spends them in front of the TV, watching us.
She does, watching us. She's missing out on the fun. Commendations and good news, we have special guests here tonight, MBMS GHS Orchestra is here to talk about your experience at the ASTA.
Muriel, who teaches our strings program, is going to talk a little bit about the experience that you had.
Well, first of all, I would like to thank the board to let me present this, and secondly, also the school district, because without your help, I was not going to be able to do this. What happened is, in 2003, this book came out, and it's called Jazz Fiddle Wizard, and was, I was at the national conference in 2003, and I was very intrigued by this. This is really a new way to teach strings. And so I, every summer, from 2003 to 2011, I went to the Kent University, and I studied with this gentleman, who is now a professor of music at University of Georgia State, and he got his PhD doing those books at University of Texas. So he's a very, very accomplished violinist and also professor. So the process started in 2012, March 2012, I did a proposal to present a workshop at the national conference, which was going to happen in the end of February and early March in Providence, Rhode Island. And this conference is for regrouping all the major string teachers and professors from all over the U.S., and even some from foreign countries. So we had, they had 188 workshops that were accepted. It took about two months to know, to notify if we were going to be accepted or not, and I got lucky, they accepted my workshop. And because it was all about curriculum and string teaching, I was able to, with your consent, to have 18 of our students participate for the day. So they left at 6:00 a.m. and came back at midnight. It was a long day, but it was a very enriching experience for them. And there's a little story that I like to interject. What happened is, in the morning, we did the presentation, it was an hour workshop, and then in the afternoon, that same professor was doing another workshop with Skype, and he needed some volunteers, so he took a couple of my kids to play. And while we were doing the workshop, there were three little elementary string players next to them, and I said, "Oh, my gosh, those kids are really good." So they got a little worried about this. But then, like, we went to the concert at night, turned out that those three little kids were part of the Junior National Fiddle Champions. So our Gofftown kids were exposed to the very best, so after that, they felt a little better. So if somebody could get the lights, I just have a couple of pictures, and the music that the students played, they also improvised, they stood up by the microphone, I heard six students improvising, so it was really cool. Thank you. So this is one of the pieces they played. Seems like we don't have sound, just a minute. Maybe it's not plugged in. I had it all set this afternoon. I'm sorry, I don't have my violin with me, so I'm not able to play. Technology is great when it works.
Amen to that.
At least you'll see that they were all kind of anxious, and it turned out to be a very wonderful experience. I made sure that everybody knew we were from Gofftown.
Thank you.
And so we were well represented. This is Sarah LaSella, Eric Chilquet, Josh Teed, one of, a sixth grader that was a friend of mine, this is Dante Aguayo, Abby Ploney, Anna Ploney, and Lindsay Roll, and this is Lili Chaver, she only started this year in eighth grade. So I'm sorry about the sound.
Did you plug the speaker in?
Oh, that could be it, I'm sorry. That's it.
Can you plug the speaker into the wall?
Yeah.
This speaker right here is for the big system.
Oh. Yeah, it is. Okay, well, now it's working. they do that kind of music instead of classical, because they don't really listen to classical music anymore. And I have one parent here, she was a shock pro there, and maybe, Mrs. Baggert, do you have a couple of comments you might like to add?
Yes, absolutely. The kids had a really enjoyable time. My daughter is a cellist. Two weeks ago, you had good news, where they talked to the girl here who spoke about how they went, she spoke about the violin, because there are violas and cellists as well that go. How many, there's four now, or six cellists?
Four cellists.
There's a big group of kids, and they're very, very enthusiastic and committed to it. The field trip was wonderful, it was a really, really long day, but the kids had a lot more energy than some of the adults, but they had a really good time. And we, Julia and I and a couple of the other cellists went into a workshop, there was various workshops after the performances that they had, and they were exposed to, you know, people that were playing on a much higher level that hopefully they aspire to be at eventually, which was really exciting, because they were young people like themselves. They also had a big expo type of thing, where the kids could go through, and they had an electric cellist that Julia was very taken with. The music's taken, it really, there's classical, as Muriel said, obviously, but there's also the electric cellists and violists, sound, violas and so forth, and the sheet music and all that kind, so there's all that stuff that the kids were exposed to, they could see. The convention center was attached to a mall, I don't know if you've seen the Providence Mall, but that was fun, going back and forth to that. So it was a really enriching experience, I think, for the kids, and to see the kids from Gofftown, you know, being able to participate in something on a national level, in some cases international, was pretty exciting. They also were in Litchfield a couple weeks ago, and then this past weekend, Gofftown had Spring Fest. And I'll tell you, they had the performance the week before as well at the middle school, and there is not apartment space to be had, or a seat to be had, it's standing room only for all of these concerts. So they're very well supported by the community and by the students, and I think it's really exciting to see that coming out of the middle school and the high school, these kids that are playing at this type of level. So you get a chance to check out performances, really, really something to see. And Muriel is extremely dedicated to the program, too, so I'd like to thank her as well.
So a large group, we got all A's, so to say something.
Thank you, Muriel.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do we have any other commendations and good news tonight?
I have some good news from the elementary schools, from Maple Avenue. On similar note, pardon the pun, this Thursday, April 4th, Mr. Landano and the string students will have their spring concert at MBMS at 7:00. And Mr. Landano and Mrs. Swett are also preparing a group of 40 4th graders for a show course on Wednesday, April 17th, at the high school here, at 7:00. And they practice in the room next to mine, and I get to hear them over a luncheon recess time, and they're really good, so come on out and watch them. Starting this week, our 2nd and 4th through 4th graders are participating in the NWA testing this month. There are three days scheduled for each grade level to take this online assessment in reading language usage and math. And at Bartlett, on the 21st, they had their first math and science night, and over 80 students and their families arrived for an evening of math and science activities, and most of them consisted of problem solving and experimental activities. The night was a kickoff to their science project night, which will be held later in May, and the feedback was very positive, and families hope that they can do this evening again. And then this year, they participated in the Earth Hour program, it's a worldwide recognition of global energy usage. And on Friday, March 22nd, all the students were asked to wear black, and they shut off all the lights and stopped using electrical items from 1:45 to the end of the day. And while the lights were off, all the students and staff decorated carostopping bags for their parents' seats, and they go, those were reusable bags. And on Saturday, March 23rd, the Bartlett PTA had its breakfast with Easter Bunny in the Bartlett Elementary School cafeteria. And over 400 breakfasts were served, besides having delicious pancake breakfasts, children were able to have their picture taken with the Easter Bunny, participate in numerous activities such as face painting, cards and crafts, raffles, and enjoy the cake walk. And the student council continued to collect food items for both humans and animals to be donated to the Food Network and local animal shelter. There's a friendly competition to see whose classroom has the most donations each week.
I O news from the middle school. So club forums that were developed by student government are now available to students and teachers. Students will have the opportunity to create and become involved in clubs that meet their interests. Sewing, garden, and advanced running clubs are currently some of the clubs that are in the works. The PBIS classroom rollout went really well last week. Each grade level earned the opportunity to watch a movie as the entire grade level, so all the 8th grade watched a movie together, all the 7th grade watched a movie together, and then 5th and 6th, which they've never had the opportunity to do before, so they are pretty excited about that. And student government got them all popcorn from Cinemagic, which was a treat picking up.
Some of these were still...
We had some of those people coming out of the theater.
You had, following you down the highway, because nothing like the smell of popcorn did grow.
I had my car stocked, it looked like a Subaru car commercial, I stocked with popcorn, some lady came out of the theater and goes, "This looks really weird." It's for our school, she's like, "Okay." Spring sports tryouts wrapped up last week, so boys and girls lacrosse, baseball, softball will be underway. All their practices started today, and then track starts on April 2nd, which is tomorrow. Team 8-3 has accumulated over 382 hours of volunteer service in the communities of Gofftown, New Boston, and Denmark since September. Teachers have encouraged students to demonstrate that they're responsible and engaged citizens by becoming active in their communities. Team 8-3 would like to take the time to acknowledge all of their students' hard work. And Team 8-2 has wrapped up their annual fundraiser for Liberty House of Manchester. The fundraiser supports the rehabilitation of homeless veterans, many who suffer from post-traumatic stress disorder. This year, they raised a lot. They raised $850 for Liberty House, which is enough to feed their residents for a year from the food pantry, so it's pretty commendable. And then finally, congratulations to Mr. Lee, who received a grant for hydroponics, which, if you don't know what that is, I Googled it, it's the cultivation of plants in solution rather than soil. So he hopes to introduce that in a new unit to the students and teach them about the process and how it can be used and the advantages of using that type of planting as sort of a green technology. That'll be interesting.
Couple things at the high school. We're going to be probably, hopefully, getting some of that grant money, too.
Yep. That's attorney mail, you got it.
Yeah, so that's exciting, that's several thousand dollars, and so Mr. Greenland's culinary classes will be working on some gardens, and the leadership class will be doing some landscaping, and then the environmental club will sustain this stuff for years to come. So it's a big boost for all of this. The only other thing I had was that one of my 9th grade students is a finalist, she's on an independent robotics team, they just won a national championship.
Wow.
And they're moving on in a few weeks to the international championships in St. Louis. It's not a school team, but she's a student here, she's only in 9th grade, so it's pretty exciting. She wasn't even going to tell me, she was out for a couple days, and I'm like, "I'm just curious, where are you going?" "Oh, the national championship." And she won. I'll keep you updated about it.
That's wonderful, thanks.
I can just add the grant, so I was approached by Susannah Thurber, who has retired from finality, and that's part of, kind of like State Farm does, they have grant allocation, so she had actually donated $10,000, and called us to see if there was, you know, some way to use that money for the school district. She lives in Gofftown, and so I asked her what her interests were, and because it should tie to something that she said, she had talked about agriculture or horticulture, so I connected with this, because I knew there were some projects that were in the works, and I knew the greenhouse hadn't been started but hadn't gotten finished, so they both wrote, Sam and Mike Lee from the middle school both wrote grants, and they were both about $5,000, so she accepted both of them and will process that. So that was nice, to help them finish those kind of initiatives that they started.
That's wonderful.
Does anyone else have any commendations or good news? Jenny?
I know the student council of the high school on Wednesday is hosting the, I think it's the southern region of the spring conference of student councils, is that they'll be here.
We saw that on the site. Sorry. I've got a couple. I was at Maple Avenue on Friday for the culminating event, they had had the artist and residents there, the two fiddles, visiting with the students and working with them on traditional dance and calling, and it was wonderful. That was sponsored by the PFT, and I do want to take a moment just to, I mean, it's Volunteer Appreciation Week, it's towards the end of this month, and volunteers really do a lot to enrich our schools and our community, and this was one way, I mean, the children, every child was engaged, and that was a great thing. The other thing I want to do is, Keith's tired of hearing about it, the Mountain View Middle School hockey team.
I love hockey.
Because I do carry on about them, but I am very proud of them, since this was the first year in a long time they had been able to put up a winter team. And this is something that is 100% parent-supported, funded, friends of hockey helps them out a lot. This isn't something that they get support from the district, but they do play under Gofftown's name, and for Gofftown Middle School, they played in a tournament over, not this past weekend, but the weekend previous, and they placed fourth. They played teams from all over. What I found most commendable, if I may say so, is the culture of our team and the personality of our team. This was some good, strong, competitive, but clean playing. There were other teams that really weren't demonstrating the sort of sportsmanship one might hope for from, you know, from their team, and I was very proud of Gofftown's team, I was proud to say I was from Gofftown, and I'm very appreciative of the volunteer coaches who helped make that team. I know so much in our town is... I know so much in our town is, especially our athletic programs, are done in volunteer, and it just, it really says a lot. And I appreciate that, they did a great job. What do you got?
Muriel.
Muriel's got it. Super, thank you.
Because of the national conference, we've been asked at the state level to play for Allstate. So on April 12th, we will be playing.
One of those, that high school Allstate?
Yes.
That's awesome.
That's really important.
That's the end of this, where is that?
At Bretoni Center in Concord.
Nice, that's a great opportunity. Thank you. Public comment?
I'm Joy McNeely from Pageville Road, Gothstown. And I've been the lead to the union leader, but I haven't been appointed yet, so I forwarded it to the board yesterday and to Buckle this morning. I've been on the parent volunteer groups at Maple Ave and Mountain View for over 13 years, so I care very much about kids' education. And I didn't appreciate the headline that stated, "The school board says town doesn't value education." In recent elections, we have made a decision hanging over us that we had no control over Dunbar and pulling out of the area agreement or not. But maybe this is why voters were very hesitant to approve a project to renovate two elementary schools. Many of us are watching our spending as our jobs are not as secure as they once were, and many have not seen any cost of living raises recently. We passed the town budget, but we did not pass the school budget. Maybe that message is our school board needs to rethink a few of these items. Given the new and developed facts of Dunbar leaving, a loss of approximately 177 students, resignation of the middle school principal, and upcoming resignation of our superintendent, here are a few money-saving ideas to consider. Close Bartlett Elementary, it's a rundown building. The ratio of staff to students at the two elementary schools is quite different. Bartlett has 40 staff to 201 students, whereas Maple Ave has 50 staff to 457 students. Of course, Glen Lake's ratio is 27 to 170, the younger students. Another thought is shuffle students to Glen Lake and Maple Ave, move the 4th grade to Mountain View, and possibly move the Bartlett principal there as well. If we really need one superintendent and two assistants, then we don't longer have to deal with the Dunbar school board. I just would like to start thinking outside the current thought process and more reasonable solutions. Thank you.
Thanks for coming, Joy. It was nice speaking with you earlier. Any other public comment? Mr. Bates?
Hi, I'm Bill Bates, I'm from Tiventown, Oregon. Although you stole my thunder there a lot, as far as the school, I guess what I was going to say was similar in light of recent quotes as far as school. I thought, once you get caught up with a lot of other things, which I'm sure you're doing, is it may be time to just take that top to bottom, rethink of school facilities, enrollment, and potentially reconfiguration of schools, to your point. And if you were going to create a subcommittee or a citizens group to look at that again, I'd be willing to volunteer. I think it's, like I said, I'm supportive of Gothstown's schools. I have a kindergartner who will be going to Maple Ave next year, and I know the immediate problem with Bartlett is something that's an immediate concern, so maybe there's some incremental steps we could take. And if you decide to rethink this whole thing and you want some of us' involvement, I'd be interested.
Listen, thank you. Ben, did you have a public comment or?
Yes, as a, I would stand over there, it was a little difficult for me to get over there, but speaking as a resident of Gothstown, I think at this point in time, we have a golden opportunity for the 2014-2015 school year budget to look at the Gothstown budget, the SAU budget, and really think long and hard about where we are and where we're going. I believe, if I may be mistaken, but I believe that there's been a default budget for three years. I think that sends a very strong message. And I think we, all of us sitting around this table, have the opportunity, have the obligation, if you will, to look at this situation and to, yes, we all favor education. I've been in education for well over 35 years, and I'm sitting on this board, and I work for this town. And we all have a desire for education, but we also have to consider that the costs and the people, the expenses, and people not being able to pay their taxes and not being able to make ends meet. So I think we have a, we owe it, no pun intended, to the town, to the residents, to look long and hard at the upcoming budgets to see where we can. And perhaps at the end of this year, I have not looked at the budget, this is my second meeting, but I will be looking at it, and perhaps at the end of this year, we might have a little, a nice chunk of change to send back to the town to help reduce the upcoming tax rate. And that, I think, is our obligation as taxpayers, as members of the board, and most of all, for caring for the education of our children, to provide best education possible and to look at those costs that are not direct educationally related delivery services. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment? Seeing none. Standing committee reports, human resources. Do we have a report? I don't think they have either. Hank, is that you? HR? No? Okay. Hank did the report last time. PNC, PNC met tonight. We talked a lot about planning. I can't be certain, but I'm pretty sure that we have more on our plate this year than we have in this board's history, or in this board's recent history. And so from a planning and communication standpoint, we started trying to talk about laying out this year as far as what we're going to tackle, what we're not going to tackle, and we're not even anywhere near, like, trying to, you know, make a recommendation to the board at the whole, but we're trying to, you know, come up with some way to maybe work a little more efficiently and effectively, because we have so much to do. We talked about trying to get a board retreat, and I know we had talked about this last year, we wanted to do it in May. By the time we were done, we were meeting in August. I have three possible dates, either Tuesday, or Wednesday, or Thursday, I'm going to send out a meeting wizard. These are from May, so we can get up and running, and so we can try to talk collectively about our goals, what we're looking to get out of this year, what we're looking to achieve. That way, if there's anything that's not one of our goals, we know right away, you know, if we're not going to work on the elementary facilities, done, off the table, so we can focus our energies on what we need to. So if you could, just keep your eyes on your inboxes for the meeting wizards, so that we can see what we can do about getting the board retreat up and running, that would be super. We did also just touch briefly on volunteer appreciation week, which of course is coming up the third week of April. It's April Vacation Week, and making sure we get.
We're giving them a week off.
Right, there you go. We had drafted and approved at last meeting, we read into the record the note that we were sending out, so it was just a follow-up to make sure that that takes place and that happens. Because we definitely want to make sure, they do so much, we want to make sure we recognize accordingly. Next, we actually, typically we meet once a month, given the workload, PNC is meeting again in two weeks. Suzanne?
Yeah, I'm just thinking that we might not have the luxury of taking our summer off this year.
No, we might not. We actually talked about that. We talked about that too. We talked about that too.
I mean, maybe not a full schedule, but definitely some work in the summertime.
Something, because we do, we have several different negotiations that need to take place. It's an awful lot, so, absolutely. So I'm glad to see you're on board with that, Suzanne.
I'm at my house, I have a pool.
Excellent. I'm all in. All right, CNE.
CNE has not had meetings since our last meeting, but we do have one scheduled for next Monday at 7:00 at the SAU. And an invitation will be sent also to Dunbar and New Boston to attend that meeting. May I also add, this is not curriculum and education, but I am on the ADA committee, and we did have a meeting of the ADA committee. There was a complaint about voting, handicapped accessibility in voting. So people were here from the state with the town to go over the problem. And basically, their preliminary report was that everything met minimum standards. And so there will be a report going to the town so that they can decide what they want to do above and beyond that. And I will be getting a copy of that as well, so I'll let us, I'll let you know what's going on, but that is the town's purview.
I would say, just to clarify that, it is the town, it's just that they host at the school, so we participate in case there's any questions they have.
But it did meet, the state examiner said that it did meet their minimum standards, so.
If I can have one little thing in there, there used to be a former thing that I was involved with. As a school, it's great, because our handicap access comes right to the office where we need it. The problem, schools aren't built for voting areas, and we're way in the back gym, so it's difficult for someone necessarily who has a hard time walking to come in the Handicap Act entrance to walk all the way to the gym, and I think that was the primary motivation.
That they could come in the back entrance.
Yeah, that might be something that could be pointed out, that it would be a lot easier to park back there.
Much easier.
Sign in yourself.
I made a recommendation, and I think they're going to follow up on it, that in the voter's guide that they send to everyone's home, to put a map and to highlight handicapped accessible places. So they felt that that was a good idea, and they're going to include that in the voter's guide when it goes out for voting, so.
Good recommendation. Yeah.
Thanks, Jenny. Budget committee, budget committee met a couple of weeks ago. It was a fairly brief meeting. It was, we really just talked about the election results and the passage of budgets or the failure to pass budgets. There were some suggestions around the table regarding selling off both elementary schools and building a whole new elementary school. It was also, you know, I had a bug put in my ear that, because as we know, the fire department had put off any changes to their fire stations in deference to the building, the elementary school's building, and that those repairs can't, won't be held off forever, and they can't be put off forever. That is probably one of the biggest key pieces that came out of that meeting. There is expressions of frustration over, you know, a lot of work that goes into budgets and different tax that can be taken for next year. But it was about a half hour, 45 minute meeting. We meet again on the 18th of April. You look like you have a question? No? Okay. Anna?
We met briefly this evening between approximately quarter of eight, excuse me, quarter seven and 7:00. We reviewed the manifest, which we will be presenting at that portion of the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Superintendent's report?
We received information from local government center regarding our health insurance. If you remember, we had our GM guarantee maximum rate. Our rates actually came in at an average of 1.2%, which is very nice. So we have a little bit of savings there. And again, it varies, so the highest, we had one plan go up 11.3%, but we had one plan go down 0.3%. So, and it varies depending on the, we have a volume of plans, so that varies. Thus, we received some additional information on the contribution holiday that they're giving us for the 2011 school year payments. And so I've asked Ray and Kate to sit down and come together with a plan for how we're going to distribute those funds, what that looks like. So we will bring that actually to all three boards, actually four boards, because the SAU board would be involved in that as well, is what that looks like for return to the district, as well as return to some portion of the premium to employees who paid that portion of the premium. So we will have a plan to bring back to you on that, as soon as we continue to get more details. I did want to let you know, I just, late breaking news, our FBLA, our Future Business Leaders of America, went to the state conference last week. It was on Thursday and Friday, it's an overnight conference, they're volunteering some state competitions, and Crystal Scarlett wanted to let me know that we did the best we've ever done. We had five first-place awards and one third-place award. We won for, an award for FBLA Week, and Jessany McNeil won an outstanding award for community service. We also received, Mackenzie Duval received third place for personal finance. Dale Keith received first place for computer problem solving. Alessandra Barone received first place for accounting. Morgan Susie, first place for computer cybersecurity. Andrew, I'm going to kill these names, Cretonn, received first place in accounting, and Iris Zhang received first place in business healthcare administration. So we did really, really well at that. Kevin, also, again, late breaking news, Kevin Farley just emailed me this morning to let me, actually at 2:30 this afternoon, to let me know, they just received notice that one of our teams from the Moody's Megamath Challenge is moving on to the next round. So they choose 175 teams out of the 1,054 teams that did the challenge, they choose 175 to move forward. If they are, if they go, they're a contender for between $1,000 and $20,000 prizes, if they go through this round, the next round will be to present their papers at Moody's corporate headquarters in Manhattan. So we'll wish them the best on that as they go along. I was invited to a lunch in for Espaia, she goes by Sia Cody, who was nominated for 2014 New Hampshire Teacher of the Year. So Nicole Darty and I will be attending a lunch in for her. They honor all of the awardees, and she'll, this is kind of the first start of the process for that award, so that's nice. April 15th, your next board meeting, I will not be here. I need to have some other kidney stones taken care of. So Brian will be covering for me on that day, if anybody has any questions. Just a reminder, because things are coming up at the end of the year, I know it's hard to believe, but senior barbecue, senior graduation is on June 19th, so remember, that's the day for the senior barbecue, for those who are new to the board. The Gothstown school board hosts a senior barbecue for the seniors during the day of graduation. They go over to Saint, the students go over to Saint Ace to do rehearsal, and we cook up a couple hundreds of hot dogs and hamburgers for them, usually about between 10 and about 10 o'clock usually, but I'll have more information specifically on the time. We also, if the board isn't opposed as in the past, we'll invite Dunbar and New Boston boards to participate in that. It makes a nice event for the kids. So just mark your calendar, June 9th, if you can participate in that.
9th or 19th?
19, sorry. 19.
19.
Just an update on, at the last board meeting, we talked, we spoke about inviting the New Boston board to a meeting to begin the negotiations for the area agreement. I have spoken to the New Boston board they're in, they're ready to go, I think it's going to be the same people. I have not scheduled that meeting, because I asked Sarah Browning, so one of my concerns was, I want to make sure that the boards can do this agreement with the way it's set up, with Dunbar pulling out with no other warrant article for that. So Sarah is just confirming with the AG's office, and we want to get something in writing from them that, yes, this is the best process to follow, that you have the authority to do that. So that's why I'm holding. I started to write the letter to Dunbar, to New Boston, and I got stuck, because the RSA doesn't really, there's no RSA that really fits what we're doing. And so I asked Sarah for clarification, and she said, you know, let me reach out to the AG's office and just get something in writing that they believe, basically that this was an entity, a corporate entity, that one person left, the other two are remaining, and you have the right to do this without another warrant article having been on the ballot. So she has, she's trying to schedule a meeting, they actually called her today to schedule a meeting just to get more additional information, so I offered to attend that meeting. So as soon as I have more information, but know that both sides are ready to go, as soon as I get that confirmation, I think that would just, as opposed to going into it and maybe not doing it the right way, let's make sure we just go into it the right way.
Yeah, no, we want to go into it the right way.
So we're going to, as soon as I have more information on that, I will get that, try to schedule a meeting. And the last thing is, I have a request from the middle school, from Brian, Jen, and Nicole. One of the things that we have not been able to plug in a piece of with not having a principal and having Jen and Nicole fill in is lunch due. and having Jen and Nicole fill in is lunch duty. So, Jim used to do lunch duty, and so, we're lacking a body to help assist us there. And so, they are asking if we can possibly hire a two and a half hour a day para educator just to help us plug in the lunch block. We're just, Brian and I, Mary Claire have gone over and tried, but we can't do this every day, you know, it's a lot, it's in that period of time. And I'm not sure it's in the board's best interest or the town's that we're spending our time doing lunch duty. So, I'd like to request an approval from the board to just hire a two and a half hour aide for the rest of this year to fill in the lunch duty piece until we get somebody on board.
Who do you think the rate is for pay?
We estimate it at about $1,600 from now till the rest of the year.
Do we have a para on staff now that is?
Yeah, we don't. And I mean, all, everybody who's available is doing lunch duties already, and like, the paras are all either working with kids or having lunch with kids, or assigned a responsibility, so.
You need a motion from the board?
I would like a motion from the board.
I'll make it. A second, whatever works.
So, Dan, second by Philip. Any more discussion, questions? Okay. All in favor of approving sixteen, well, what's the motion?
A two and a half hour aide.
Two and a half hour.
I just want to make sure everybody knows what they're, they're voting on. So, two and a half hour aide to cover lunch.
From now till the rest of the year.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're unanimous.
Thank you. And that's all I have.
How quickly, may I ask a question on that?
Sure.
How quickly do you think you're going to be able to find someone? Do you have somebody in mind, or?
I don't know. I'll look as fast as I can. I'm motivated.
I'm sure.
I'm sure they are. Okay. Manifest and vouchers.
I have a manifest, I'd like to make a motion to, for your consideration, $1,730,708.13.
Second.
We have payroll, taxes, and benefits of $1,397.11. Sped activity this month, we have three invoices over $5,000. Lighthouse School, there's two students for the month of March for $13,916. The Spalding Youth Center, we have one student there for $6,500. And Safeway, which is the, the transportation service, is $42.98. That's a total of $24,714 for sped. General expenses, we had oil for the high school, any guesses? About $16,100. The Gothstown Truck Center, which is one-tenth of our annual payment, $96,628. There's something called Inspiration Software, which is the Kidspiration site licenses for $6,766, and that is licensing fees. Yeah, I know the licensing fees, but they may want to know for the, which software they use it at.
Kidsporation, Inspiration, it's like a writing software, so it does like, write maps for writing and for things.
Cool stuff. Thermal Store, which is the ice machine. Now, the ice machine is mainly used for sports. A very small portion of it is used for food. I was thinking the other way around, this is one thing we talked about it. Ray's going to see if there's any amount, right now, $5,110 is completely out of the general fund. We're going to see if there's any plausible way to look to see if food service should be paying a little bit of that, so he'll, he'll report back to us on that. And our April assessment for the SAU is $67,415. Total itemized is $1,613,738, and there's about 107,000 of other under $5,000 numbers. And here is the individual stuff. Ray would love to entertain any further questions.
Do we have any questions? All in favor of approving the manifest as presented?
Aye.
We're unanimous, thank you.
And thank you for those of you who aren't particularly assigned to the ANF Subcommittee to have joined us tonight.
I noticed you had some help over there.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, that's good. All right, moving on to old business, last day of school.
Yep, so this is just FYI, so the last day of school is June 28th. I aired at the last meeting, because afterwards I got lots of emails from the principals, so I misread what I had written. So, the, we all met, SAU-eyed, all the principals, all the assistant principals, and discussed the last day of school, and it was determined that if we had another snow day after the 28th, we would back up and make up hours, not making them up now. So, we are in school till the 28th, so, and if anybody else would like information, I'd be more than happy to go into non-public to discuss that a little further. But, that's just an update, that the 28th of June is the last day of school.
Is that the last day of school for kids?
Yes, for everybody. Teachers, Gothstown teachers don't have an extra day at the end.
Philip?
Is that where we were?
Yes, yeah.
Graduation doesn't change?
Graduation doesn't change. We still meet the hours, and I'll send them a letter, just letting them know, we don't meet the days, but we'll meet the hours for high school.
Was there any interest for us to actually consider adding a half hour a day, so it didn't quite go to the 28th?
There was, I talked about it at the last meeting, and if the board would like to discuss it, I'd be more than happy to do that, perhaps in non-public under the.
Oh, that's the piece you were talking about.
Yeah.
Okay.
Reputation of others.
Something, I was going to say, what would be non-public? What would allow us to go into a reputation of others?
Or that, I don't have the exact one in front of me, but.
As long as it's not one of us.
It's not one of you.
You can trash our reputation.
Okay. So, we revisit that then? In non-public after the meeting, or towards the end? Do we have other non-public tonight?
You may want to go into non-public, perhaps, for administrator nominations.
Okay. All right, is the board all right with that?
Yeah.
Barnard Park Track Discussion?
Yep, so this is just a follow-up from the last meeting. We talked about allocating $25,000 out of this year's budget to pay for the track. I also had an extensive conversation with Steve Fountain and Frank over, over the track, and so, we, they actually, I am requesting $25,000 and an additional $4,500. So, what has happened, so last year, the year before, they, we budgeted money to fix the netting and the holes and the concrete at the thrower circle. I'm guessing this is perhaps a discuss item, or checking field isn't my area of expertise. They, and we cut it, because we were, had the proposal for the new track, and we budgeted it again last year, and we cut it again. It is now in disrepair that if we don't fix it, if we don't invest the $4,500 to fix it, we cannot have that event, because we do not have an appropriate. Steve has basically shut it down, because it's just, he's taken the netting down, it just is not a safe environment. So, we're actually asking for the $25,000 plus the $4,500 to be able to get that into at least workable condition for the students to be able to use now. There is approximately, so the question last month, last meeting was, where will the money come from? At the high school, when we, when we look at the health insurance line, savings in those lines, we have about $34,000 in savings in those lines, so, overall, and those are people changing health insurance plans, different staff, people coming and taking different plans. So, I would recommend we take it out of that line.
Move the $4,500.
The $4,500 or the 25?
Plus the 25.
25 is already been approved, hasn't it?
No, that has to come back where it was coming from.
Oh, okay, well, I'll move the 25.
You raise the 45.
Yeah, 25.
A second.
You do the math.
29.5.
So, Suzanne, and seconded by Hank, it looks like Jenny has a question. Jenny?
Did that discussion happen with the town to see if they would pay for the whole part of that?
The, the agreement with the town was that we were paying, each paying half. So, this goes back like a year and a half now, maybe even two years, that we would each put in $25 and pay.
$25,000.
$25,000, yeah.
I'll put in the 25, if that's all it is.
That we would each pay half to repair the track and get it into a safe working condition for both the community and the school. And so, the, the town has actually already spent their $25,000 on repairs already, and we're going to do the second half, which we could get, actually.
I guess my question is, they had extra money that the accountant said they needed to spend off, and I just thought, maybe this would be a really good place to spend off some.
Yeah, I did, we did not talk to them about it, it just, this was just the agreement that we had.
We're going to change our name to Paulie Anna.
Yeah, we had just agreed with the town to, to each split half the cost.
Where are we for a balance? I, I know that we, and I mean balance as far as items, I know that we have agreed to do the $25,000, but we're also looking to operate off default for another year, as opposed to a budget that had included that $25,000. I also know that we've cut from the budget any number of different items, and I very much want to be supportive of this, but I also want to make sure that we are not doing so at the expense of, of something else that is also key, such as our math curriculum books or our language arts. Do you have any, any feelings on that, like where we are balance-wise, as far as what we're taking from?
Right, so we're at about seven, seven something.
Yeah, unexpected, unexpected, unexpended funds on the operating budget right now are about $330,000. And we've got about that same amount created in a reserve, management reserve, which is carryover from last year and some from this year, so, is just under $700,000 available to support us through the balance of this year.
So much maintenance is getting put off, there's so much else that we're getting, getting put off, I'm struggling.
And I've started, I've started compiling those lists, and I'll be bringing those back shortly. I just, this, I mean, this is something we need, I mean, this is, again, something that if we don't do, those kids may not be practicing, and we may not have track and field team, because it just, it's some, it's something that has to be done. And that was, I, I will say, that was when we made the recommended cuts at the last meeting, this was on there, and I agreed to put on there with the expectation that we could use money from this year to pay for that. Otherwise, I think we have to find another $25,000 to cut and put it back in the budget, because it's something we agreed to do, I mean, unless the board wants to go back on an agreement.
We did make a commitment, there's, there's no question, and yet, I feel that we make a commitment every day to the education of our kids. You know, I just, I must say, I'm not trying to be obstinate, I'm not trying to, I, it just, this is difficult. We are always trying to choose that, that line to walk with what we're, we're cutting and we're funding, or we're not. Jenny?
Daisy, do you know that it, with this project, will that bring the track up to speed so that the track team can have home meets?
No, because we don't have the space there. I mean, we'll never have a home meet there, because we don't have the space. There's no parking, there's no seating, it just, it's not big enough, but this will bring it up so that the, it's safe for the community. I mean, it's safe for residents, it's safe for our students. I believe the town has done like the top co, has, has done, I'm not a track person, but I believe they have done, I see a shake of a head.
They've fallen holes, right?
And they took down some of the edging that was rot, that was falling apart, and have rebuilt that up, and I think we're owning like the striping, and there's just different pieces that, the last part of it, that we're going to be doing.
Can I ask?
Sure.
I think also, because of the surface of the track, it's not suitable for meets. I, I don't believe pavement is a suitable track material for meets.
You need to have, you need to be able to spike, but.
And you need different facilities, according to the intramiles. Any other questions, comments, discussion? Philip?
One of the things.
I'm sorry, Philip.
Go ahead.
Philip had the floor, but, okay, Dan? Somebody go.
One of you.
I was thinking that maybe it would be easier if we bifurcated the motion, 25 in one spot and 45 in another motion, if that would make it easier, because I've heard two different pieces.
The motion on the floor.
25 is useless.
Yeah, the motion on the floor is for both, so I think we should take action on that, that motion. Philip?
Ray, I just had a quick question. The 3:30 today is unencumbered, not.
Unanticipated.
Just unencumbered.
It's unencumbered, that's right.
Anything else? All in favor of the motion as presented to approve $25,000 plus $4,500 for the?
$4,500.
$4,500, is that what I said?
Yeah.
Okay.
Total, $29,500.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very unanimous, thank you. NVMS principal search process.
So, Brian, Mary Claire, and Kate have been meeting, and have come up with, I think it's a pretty thorough process, just to pass this along. Done a really nice job outlining, color-coded, so when you, it comes around, the green is all the highlighted areas that they will be looking for community feedback from, and then the yellow are all the dates that whoever sits on that committee will be required to be at. So, they did a nice job color-coding, but I'll go through this generally, so you can read it, but, basically, looking for approval of the plan, we'll start posting and advertising immediately, get on the website, then on, New Boston Central School actually had scheduled a kind of a public forum to get feedback from their community, so that's going to be on the 3rd. On the 8th and the 9th, they're looking to get feedback, the committee, the committee from administrative staff, from support staff, and from teachers, getting input from other administrators in the SAU on the 9th at our principals' meeting, and then having on the 10th, a community forum for the principal's search for Gothstown, Dunbar, and New Boston parents who can come and have a conversation and dialogue around what they're looking for. On the 12th, compiling all that data. On the 15th, conduct the selection of members, so I believe through that process, they'll be asking for people to volunteer their time, talk about the, the timeline, because again, this is a process that's going to be intense, so, we want to make sure everybody knows all of the dates, because you can't come to one set of interviews and not all of the interviews. So, people who want to sign up will know what the dates are for committing and be able to submit their name for selection. And Brian or Mary Claire, feel free to jump in at any time, if there's something I'm missing. We'll notify members on the 16th of that. Let's see, application closings will be April 16th, then we'll send, let's see, compile interview, there's a date to look at interview questions, distribute packets and interview questions to the committee. They're looking at April 30th as a date to meet, to discuss, review all the applications, determine who's going to be interviewed, 5/7 and 5/9, looking from 3 o'clock to 9 o'clock to interview, do preliminary reference checks after that. On the 15th, conduct second interviews, that committee conducting second interviews, so, the first interview process will be, you know, probably eight to 10 candidates, that then will whittle, they'll whittle it down to probably, you know, four or five, with a final recommendation to me at some point. We'll announce the finalists, we'll have a day where they'll, the candidates, the finalist candidates will come to Mountain View. We'll have, let's see, they'll meet, we'll have different groups set up with students, staff, administration, and community members coming in to meet the candidates and provide us with feedback after that. We'll then do site visits, some, a subgroup of that, the larger committee will do some site visits to those school districts, to visit their schools. Then with a meeting on 6/3 for a status meeting on all of the visits that they're doing, and kind of whittling it down, who, who really are our top candidates that they'll recommend to me for a final interview and a final recommendation to the board, with the hope that that finalist will move to the board on June 17th. So, they're recommending for the committee composition, Brian, Mary Claire, and Kate, two Gothstown, one New Boston, and one Dunbar board members, three teachers, four parents of Mountain View students or incoming Mountain View students, two from Gothstown, one from New Boston, and one from Dunbar, and one member of the support staff, a Mountain View Middle School administrator, and a high school administrator, for a total of 17 people. We thought 17 was a good number, it's reasonable. Originally, it was like 22, we whittled it down with the notion that I think 22 is too big. So, 17 is big, it's a big committee. But we thought it was thorough, we thought the plan was thorough. It involved lots of community interactions, lots of opportunities for different people to meet them. I don't know if you guys want to add anything?
Well, maybe just a couple things that we were looking for, some recommendation from the board. Depending upon what kind of a response we get from parents and from teachers, we've developed a sort of an intake form for people to identify why they're interested in participating in this process. We would like some input from the board, if you would like us to choose people that we feel have background and experience that might best suit the committee, or if you'd like them chosen randomly. like them chosen randomly, not knowing what kind of response we're going to get. But if we had more folks interested than we've identified slots, that was something that we were hoping to get some guidance from the board.
Pull the leaves out of a hat. It's the only way you can be sure that you're not going to be accused of playing favorites.
That's what we did in Dunbar during the principal search.
If you have that many people interested, which.
Part of it may simply be that the schedule is going to weed some of the people who would otherwise be interested out, because it's a heavy time commitment.
Yep.
But I think that the community, by virtue of the people who volunteer, should dictate who ends up at the table, not us. Ask them for the expertise, yeah. I mean, to the extent that your decision can be informed.
Well, that's what we had originally talked about, but we wanted to give the board a chance to weigh in on that. I think by and large, the process that we've developed is really transparent, it gives a lot of opportunities for feedback from the communities, from teachers, from support staff, from kids. Will include extensive opportunities during the site visits where people go to Mountain View, we'll have kids interview them, we'll have opportunities for folks to really have the chance to spend their time with these candidates.
And one point of clarification when we look at the makeup of the committee, three teachers, that should say three MBMS teachers.
I guess I'm looking at this, and I think if you look at a ratio, Gothstown is kind of underrepresented. Get two Gothstown board members, one New Boston and one Dunbar. God knows where, what, 75%? Same with community parents.
Do we know that Dunbar wants a seat at the table?
We don't, but I don't know that. I mean, they are a part of us for another year, I don't, I didn't, we didn't want to discount them.
Well, that's it. The new.
Maybe say that, yeah.
I don't have a problem at all.
I can actually share some information. Rennie did approach me after the last SAU board meeting, and they expressed an interest in working on the, with us on the interim and the principal, but not on the permanent search for the new superintendent, though, because they felt that anything that was beyond the exploration in 2014 would not be appropriate for them to work on.
Well, that's the same, you could say the same thing for the principal.
I know, but it's going to happen before, so I know they indicated an interest to do so.
I mean, this is a recommendation we're making to the board. The board can adjust it however you want, just recognize the more people you add, the more, I mean, are there really, to back up and say, are there three board members or more than two that have the time to do all of this and are interested in doing it? But this is our recommendation for the committee to try to keep it at a reasonable number.
Yes, I know we've never tried to exceed 18 in previous ones.
I guess one of the questions for the board is, are we sure we want to tackle this search right now? Is this, are we finding ourselves at a time where there's a good candidate pool? My understanding of it is, yes, this is the time of year to be looking for different candidates, but I missed that day in administration school, so, you know, things that we need to think about. I mean, we're, you're heading out, so we're looking at transitioning a new superintendent, and there's a lot of change.
And this is a pretty tight time. We're on April 1st, and you want to let us in by April 16th?
Well, it's the principal, not a superintendent.
This is principal, right. Yep, no, it is.
It's a tight timeframe. It doesn't cost you anything for us to go through the process, and if you find nobody, or we don't find a suitable candidate, you know, then we look for an interim. I would just, I mean, we have time, we don't know what the pool is going to be, there's a ton of, there's a ton of job openings, but we don't know until we look, and it's, I think it's, it does a little bit of a different market than a superintendent. We know superintendents are, just got out there, and so it's my recommendation, we go forward and try to see what we find, I mean.
Do you think our budget situation's going to have a major negative effect on who applies to this?
Again, it's hard, you know, it's hard to say.
Because if I was out there looking, I think.
I think probably, I will tell you that probably the negative publicity around Mountain View will probably have more of an impact than the budget situation.
You can always tell it's a perfect opportunity for you to come in.
Absolutely, and we're in a good shape, we're in a good space right now, we're, you know, we're moving, so we are in a good space.
Yeah.
So I guess I, you know, it would be my recommendation that we at least go forward and see, you know, what we find.
Philip?
I agree. If the board needs a motion as to whether or not to go forward or to adopt the timeline, I'd make that motion. If we don't need a motion, let's figure out who you're going to nominate and how you're going to find volunteers.
I think we need a motion for this, to power, okay, so Philip seconded. Yes, you will have your chance to get your question. I got the motion on the table from Philip seconded by Jenny, and now Ms. Suzanne has a question she wishes to.
Yeah, so according to this, the board will only see the finalists that the superintendent recommends.
Right, but you'll have opportunities, so you can come to the public, like when the public comes and meets the candidates, you can, I would say the board can come to any of those. So you'll have opportunities for all of, any time that the public is invited, you're more than welcome to meet those candidates. Is there something else you would like to see added at the end?
This is past practice, the way this is.
Recent past practice. Past practice, it used to be the three finalists came to the board.
Did they really?
Yes.
Yeah, I think in the last 10 years, this has been past practice.
They're all changing all that.
Yep.
That's all you got, Jim Hunt.
Excuse me, could you repeat your motion, please?
My motion was to move forward with the timeline.
It's presented.
And to begin the search.
Okay, thank you.
Which would not necessarily include the detail of these sheets, which we can discuss, because I'm more in line with Suzanne, I would probably like to see all three, not just a single person at the full board.
So the motion was, just regardless of where it ends up, was this, to move forward.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a template that's been proposed. If there are things that the board wishes to change about that, we could.
Are you making a motion to amend line 32, Suzanne? It's on the other side.
32?
Yeah.
How many finalists do you want?
Three.
So it depends, I mean, so they may come out with one.
Sometimes the board has asked for two, and there haven't been two.
Two, right. I think that's in the piece.
Up to three.
Up to three, okay.
So what does, so what, I guess, help me understand what that looks like then, because I'm not sure what my role is.
You just come to the board, and the board gets to know them, and sometimes you can, people who live in this community can spot things that administrators don't necessarily see.
So are you looking for a full, like a second interview with the full board?
It would be a third interview.
Or just a meet and greet, although I'm just trying to get my head around what it is.
Just come to the board, answer a few questions, talk about themselves, so that we can get to know them before we pick a person.
Okay.
Because we're going to have to live with them, Stacey's going to be gone.
Gotcha. Kate?
I think that could probably better be incorporated when they, when they come to speak to the public, maybe we could just have a short session afterwards.
Whatever.
To talk with them.
Yeah.
I think you'd better do it that way, yeah.
And then you guys, the board can give you feedback.
And we can see how they interact with the public.
Yeah, that would probably be better, because I feel like at the end, like they interview with me, and then they interview with you, like, at that point, we should be making a decision, because they would have had a final interview like three times by then.
I think it sounds like what Suzanne's getting at, is she wants to meet the different candidates and have that opportunity.
More individually.
Rather than just, just, you know, blanket, make a, take a recommendation. Is that, is that what I'm?
Yeah, because if I don't see the competition, I'm not going to support.
Okay. We have Brian with his hand up, I apologize.
Having just done this recently in Dunbar for their principal search, when we had the candidates come to the school, in addition to having them interview with students, they had lunch with teachers, we also had a meet and greet with the PTO and the school board members who were able to come. So it would be well within the scope of what we're planning to build that feature into the visitation days.
Not necessarily at a formal meeting, but still we get to see.
There's other elements of detail that we also didn't share with you, we're likely looking at some points of intersection with the police department, the fire department, some other sort of community folks, so I think we can absolutely accommodate that.
Yeah, and I think doing it earlier on is better for us.
That's really good.
Does that satisfy what you're looking to?
Works for me.
Okay.
Is that incorporated in your motion? The further explanation?
It wouldn't be incorporated in my motion. I think that the explanation sufficiently addresses what is in my motion, so I'm satisfied that, to the extent that any board member wishes to have the opportunity to participate in the process and get to know the candidates, they'll have that opportunity.
Further question, Brian, are any of these meetings going to be after the normal workday? Would you precede them all to be during the normal workday?
For the, for the visitations.
Or for the interaction with the public?
We actually hadn't set the timeline of that yet, so we've identified three days that we could do visitations that would be sort of pre-assuming that there would be three finalists that the committee would be recommending to move on. So over the course of that day, we could extend it into the evening.
Line 27.
Yep, yeah. So Dan, if you, if it was the board's pleasure, we could certainly have sort of a meet and greet with the board on each of those evenings with each of the respective candidates, and again, not knowing how many finalists the committee will be recommending, it could be one, it could be four, but at this point in time, this process would identify sort of the key features of the search.
Do we have any other questions?
Suzanne, did you actually have a motion? Did you make a motion?
Philip did.
Okay.
Philip's made a motion to move forward to this process.
I think Dan was asking about a motion, but he was.
And it didn't get seconded, if it was.
Ben?
So just for point of clarification, so that everybody's on the same page, line 27, 21 May, 22 May, and 23 May, 2013, there will be meet and greet with the Gothstown school board sometime after the close of school business. Is that my understanding?
Certainly can be. Just let us know what time you'd like that to be, and we'll, we'll schedule it.
Is that, does that satisfy the questions and the concerns? I think it's a good idea, but we need to spell that out, so there are no misunderstandings.
Can I, I also ask the community interaction, would that be in the evening or during the day?
That would likely, that would likely be something after school, so we would probably have the person come and spend a portion of the school day, so they could be there, obviously during school hours, and have the opportunity to be interviewed by some students, and then we'd go sort of into the evening.
That would be with the school board, then, that could be the interaction.
Yes, so they could spend the day, interview students, maybe teachers after school, you know, from 3:30 to 4:30, community from 4:30 to 5:30, board from 5, you know, something like that, because the majority of that would have to be after school.
I think it would be valuable for the board to see how they interact with the community.
I think so. Well, any community event, anytime the community's there, you're, the board is community, you're more than welcome to attend. Yeah.
What time would be best for board members?
Brian asked a question, what time would be best for board members?
Normal workday, I can't get here till 5:15.
5:15 seems to be our witching hour.
Yeah.
And I think that's uniform, when we talk about trying to move things up a little bit earlier in the day, maybe moving to 6:00 is going to be tough for some number of people at the table.
So 6 o'clock?
I'd be willing to do 5:30.
That's about right. I mean, we're all in that ballpark, 5:15, 5:30, 6 o'clock, most of our meetings start 5:30, 6, 6:30, so. All right. Do we have any other questions? We do have a motion on the table that we do need to get, move before, so all in favor of Philip's motion, which I can't repeat, I apologize, but it's going, it's moving forward with this timetable as, as discussed with the.
At the process.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are unanimous, thank you.
Can I, can I also, just tied to the same thing, get approval, we want to advertise the salary range from 92 to 98, I want to get consensus from the board that that's an okay range. The salary right now, this year's budget is 95,387.
I'm sure it'd be commensurate upon experience, is that?
It will, but it's a range.
It's good to put a range in there, because I think it will sell it.
Somebody wants 120,000, you don't want to go by.
Well, I also think the range for a middle school principal will sell at a target, so I think it's important that we put a range.
I think we should start at 90.
Well, it's a range.
It's a range.
It's a range.
92, 98, is that what you would think?
90, 95, maybe? Negotiable beyond that?
Yes, agreed.
I catch, what was the top number you said?
I said 90, 95.
And you're saying negotiable, so that means 95?
90, I don't know how you would phrase it. Start at 90, and get, yes, you can.
There isn't established pay grades?
No, no.
You can do 99, 95, you're not.
I guess, I guess I would like, just like to propose that, if we want good candidates, we can't be cheap. Like, I just, I don't want, I get it, I get the notion, but I also don't want to, if $1,000 is going to get us a better candidate, then I just, I don't want to limit, that's why, so, just the high school salary principal this year is $100,700, so it's, it's lower than that, it's not quite there, it's lower than that, but I think that if you want to go 90 to 98 is a range that I think will attract some good candidates. I just, I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to limit our candidates by.
You want to make two, you want to make two an hour a door.
Well, I think if you take 90 to 98, and then we could use our discretion on after they come.
And what their experience.
But honestly, I don't think the middle school principal should earn as much as the high school principal, nowhere near, so.
I have a tendency to disagree, I think both jobs are equally challenging.
I think it depends on experience.
You take a second, hard can it be?
It's pretty crazy, like, those are some crazy years.
Hormones.
Oh, please.
No, really.
I focus, I know the hormones.
If we want to attract a quality candidate, that's going to.
Move us where we want it to go. 90, 98 sounds like a reasonable range.
I wouldn't vote a motion, because.
It's a range.
So Hank is, Hank is moving.
90, 98.
And your motion is range of 90 to 98? Do I have a second for Hank's motion by Virginia? Jenny? Any more discussion? All in favor?
Well, can I ask, I'm really sorry.
You missed a pause.
Well, I was waiting for you to look this way. Do we want to cap at 98, or do you want to put the number a little higher?
I would cap it there, because I think you have to, you can't, you have to be fair to your other principals, yeah.
No, I just wanted you to put on that, thanks.
That's why 98 was the, where I would cap it at.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you all.
GHS music department trip request.
Yeah, I have a request from Josh Derocha and Doug McKernan to bring the high school music department to New York City, April 19th to 21st, so it kind of coordinates with April vacation, they would miss Friday. They're looking at bringing 40 students, three high school staff, and five adult chaperones. It's a, they're going through a U.S. integrity touring, so it's a tour company they've used before, they've made the same arrangements since 1997, this is a repeat.
A repeat trip.
But it's an overnight, like they feel trip, so I just want to bring it.
And we've had no issues in the past?
It's, it's a very good trip.
This is a one to five.
Yeah, and it's high school, so.
And no motion, right?
Nope, if you don't have a motion, it goes through.
Okay. Want to have a good trip?
Nope.
All right, committee assignments. I have, I want to thank you guys all for getting back to me as quickly as you did on the committee assignments. What I did is I prioritized getting the committees formed that need to be up and running right away, which is essentially our admin and finance, CNA, policy review committee, PNC. What I didn't do yet is I didn't set up our negotiating teams, because I just, I hadn't had the conversations that I felt that I needed to have, or the thinking through of them. So for admin and finance, I have Dan, Ben, and Suzanne with Keith as an alternate. So for Admin and Finance, I have Dan, Ben, and Suzanne, with Keith as an alternate. For CNE, I have Jenny, Reta, and Philip, with Hank as an alternate. Policy Review Committee, which was once known as HR, I have Keith, Hank, and Philip, alternate Jenny. PNC, Reta, Keith, Diane, alternate Philip. Dan, tech, you're on the tech. CIP, Hank with Suzanne as an alternate. What is currently known as the Elementary Facilities Committee, Keith and Reta. What, that makes you sad?
Keith?
Well, we need, I mean, technically, it's a third, it's a three-person job, but we've only ever been able to have two. Since Suzanne's crying over there, Suzanne, I want no, no tears, so Suzanne, there.
She's ruined her 20-year record.
All right. GTV for Hank. And-
And Hank, in the past, Gary Gerollaman has kind of done that committee, so you can connect with them too.
I've done it once before, but they always meet the same night we meet.
Yeah. So I know Gary has, Gary's served as your rep, yeah, so.
Is he willing to continue to serve?
I think, I think he loved the committee.
I think so too.
I really think he was like, strange.
All right. Do you have any questions about those assignments? Speak now or forever hold your peace? Is it too much, too little? Y'all good? All right? So far, so good. Let me know.
Area committee, we already decided and never continue.
Come again?
The area, yeah.
Yeah, the area we did last week, or two weeks ago, we decided. All right? And, and in two weeks, I promise that I will have the, the different negotiating teams up, so there's DESS, GEA. We've got a couple more that are coming down the pipe, too, so. That's good times, good times, so, all right.
Did, did you take the budget committee? Is that what it is?
I did not announce the budget committee, but I see you're being fresh, yes, it's looking like me for the budget committee with Ben as an alternate.
And I strongly urge you not to do that as chair.
Ben's ignoring me.
Chair shouldn't be the budget committee.
It doesn't work well, usually.
Because everything you say as chair, they take as gospel.
Yeah, I learned that my one year I did it.
That one year, you did it, and so did, I think Scott as chair at the time.
Scott's done it a couple years as chair, I thought.
Yeah, he did it one year from the school board as chair.
It was me last year, it was a lot of work.
Yeah, and you've got enough work as chair of the school board.
Thank you.
Diane, I will be glad to continue on the ADA.
Thank you. Thank you. Just so you guys know, the reason why I didn't officially announce budget committee is because I'm really not, not ready to say this is what it's gonna be, but that's something else that, you know, that was one of the pieces along with the negotiation, I just haven't had the conversations and, and done what I think we need to do to start with, but, so that was not an official announcement on the BCA. Next up, Policy BCA, the Ethics Policy for Board Member Signatures. Do we have one copy each for board members?
No.
No, they all sign on one.
So this is a school board policy that we do have among our policies, I'm just gonna pass it around and ask that you review it and sign it. Is this something we can carry on with business while this is taking place?
I think so, because I'm, we have Dan for lunch.
You are, well, that's it, that's why I'm kind of throwing that to you here.
I follow.
Because next, we have some teacher retirements.
We got everything.
Yeah, non-renewals, resignations. Anything I want to do is if you need it.
No.
So Stacy, you want to go ahead with that?
Hopefully, we'll do this in an orderly fashion, so.
Orderly is good.
Oh.
No, but I hear you counting, and it's a coffeehouse.
We'll start by passing out, so the first, the first set of handouts, which is just has it all, all on, and then you have supplemental handouts as we go. So basically, this is what we're gonna go through now, is all of the nominations, retirements, resignations, et cetera, et cetera. It's gone all the way to the end. Phil, did you guys get them over there?
Maybe they're around?
Not yet. So, starting with teacher retirement, so these are retirements effective June 30th, and these are confirmed retirements. Denise Forrest from Maple Ave, Cheryl Giffen from Mountain View, Barbara Jones from the high school, Janine Parkinson from Maple Ave, Jean Paskovich from Glen Lake, Deb Prevee from Maple Ave, and Pat Swank from Maple Ave. So I'm looking for a motion to accept those retirements, probably all with regret.
Lots of them.
Yeah.
Well, it's a lot, right?
I'm wanting to accept all, but Deb Prevee's just to get it.
There's a lot on here that are really gonna be missed people.
You got something, Jenny?
Oh, I'd like to make that motion with regret, please.
Okay, so my motion by Jenny, seconded by, did it here, Philip?
Seconded by, oh, I'm sorry.
Philip? All in favor?
Is this, is this in a large number of retirements, or is this normal, government has so many?
It's probably a little larger than normal, but we have, you, I think you're gonna start to see this, because we have an aging population of teachers, yeah. We have lots of teachers who are eligible for retirement.
And they've been here for a long time.
Yes.
Yeah.
You look down this list.
Jean Paskovich is over 30 years.
Yeah, a lot of these are 20 to 30 years.
Deb Prevee's over 30 years as well.
I think it's 20 years.
She was my teacher when I was in third grade, Mrs. Prevee.
Pat Swank, probably 40 years.
Yeah.
So, many of them long-term.
Yeah, and great assets, great assets.
We'll have a lot of bells to give out as chair.
We will.
We're gonna get hit pretty hard with retirement.
Stipends are already encumbered.
Okay.
We have encumbered them, because in Gofftown, you have to let us know by December, so once we know we encumber whatever we owe them, so that has been encumbered in that.
It would be nice if we could do that, so that we could budget for them.
Yeah, that's something you could work in negotiations to come a little earlier.
Yes, exactly, I think we should add that to our list.
All right, so we have a motion, so we do need, need a vote on this motion, all in favor of accepting with regret. We are unanimous, thank you. Next up, teacher nonrenewals.
So these are teacher nonrenewals for a variety of reasons, most of them are just because they were one-year positions. So nonrenewals are Caitlin Kofing, here at the high school for English, that was a one-year position, Linda Paray, here at the high school for Science and Biology, Richard Mitchell is Alt Ed, again, that was just a one-year position, Phil, these are long-term leaves that people filled in. Allison Rhodes for World Language, that's a reduction in force, nonrenewal, so she got the letter that indicates it's a reduction in force, and that if we have an opening, she'll be brought back. Angela Coven, Mountain View Middle School Math, one-year position, again, that's a long-term sub-position. So I'm looking for a motion to accept those nonrenewals.
The reduction in force position, is that vegetarian, or?
Yes, that was made in the cuts, at the last meeting, with, to get some thoughts.
How much damage are we doing to our language program?
We're okay.
Yeah.
I hate to be a pain in the neck, but could we open this up after non-public?
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, I have to say, I saw one thing on here that I'd like to discuss in non-public.
Philip, you had a question?
No, I don't.
All set?
None, in my mind.
Okay, so we'll hold on to that until we-
So this is tables, until we can discuss this further.
We have the resignation of Patrick Collins, Dean of Students at the Middle School, effective, obviously, the end of this year.
Can I have, reserve that till after, in public, please?
We have teacher resignations, Kathy Ludwell, a teacher here at the high school, Mary Starvish, Bartlett Elementary School, first-grade teacher, and Madeline Wright, Bartlett Elementary School, who's the library media specialist.
I'll make a motion to accept those with regret.
With regret, yes.
Second by Philip. All in favor? We're unanimous, thank you. Co-curricular nominations?
I'm bringing forward Amy Green for JV softball, Susan Dodge for basketball, Winter Girls at the Middle School, Sean Johnson, the Middle School for Basketball, Winter Girls, Tom Lammy, High School JV baseball coach, Joshua Lewis, High School Boys varsity lacrosse, Mark Mareska, Middle School Baseball, and Amy Stillfin, High School Basketball JV.
I'm confused, isn't basketball over?
Yeah, right.
I'm guessing it's for next year.
Okay.
Yeah, basketball's wrapping up.
Really?
So, you think we're-
Because it's all basketball, so it-
I think we may be better to check and find out what's going on here.
Might not be a bad idea.
Actually, I think it's a good idea to get people in place early.
Yeah, but we don't know for sure, that's what we're doing.
I'll tell you.
As it says, 12/13.
It says winter.
Yeah, no, Stacy's left it off, so she'll find it. So what do you think, Stacy?
Just ahead of himself for next year.
All right, so Steve's planning ahead, so this is basketball.
For 13-14.
Winter Girls for 13-14.
Okay, sense now.
So he is like way ahead of the curve.
Or maybe not, hold on. One was, okay, let's see. Amy Green is JV softball, which is now.
Yeah, softball, baseball, lacrosse.
Susan Dodge is remaining as a Mountain View Girls basketball. So that's for next year. No, October 13th, I'm guessing these are for, confirming their appointments for this year. I'm sorry, I just assumed they were for last year. I've been working on teacher nominations.[1586.82]